All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February the 6th regular meeting and public hearings of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. Tonight, Dave Gruehmann, our Chief Financial Officer, is going to lead us in the invocation and the pledge. Please stand as you're able.
Let's join together in prayer. Heavenly Fathers, we meet here tonight. We first want to remember to thank you for all the many blessings we experienced and received here in this county. Father, we also want to remember those who might be going through times of a personal need now, or physical ailments, or other challenges through their day. We thank you for those across our community that care for their friends and neighbors and serve one another in each of these areas. For the meeting tonight, Lord, we want to thank you for this opportunity of self-government in our local community. Thank you for the commissioners who were elected by our citizens to serve in this capacity. And for this meeting, we only ask, Lord, for information to come forward, for understanding, and wisdom, and insight for good decisions for all those across this county. And finally, we also want to remember, as we have experienced a time of great rains with this past day and a half and flooding across the region, we want to remember those in our uniformed services who are out there right now in the elements, in our fire and rescue, and ambulance services, and police, and sheriff's services, Lord, as they're out there too, serving those who may have problems in this weather across this area. And, Father, we thank you for all these things, and pray you'll be with us through the meeting this evening. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, if you could please take a look at your agendas and make sure if there are any changes that you'd like to make this evening. I'm going to start, as I normally do, with Commissioner Levente for District 3.
No, Madam Chair, I have no changes this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper, do you have any changes this evening?
Madam Chair, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills?
No, I do not. Thank you.
All right. And Commissioner Brown?
Madam Chair, I have none. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do have one change this evening, and that is going to be for item number, public hearing number seven. We are going to postpone that item. The signage was not in place in time for this to be heard tonight, even though it had been advertised for tonight. And do we give that a two-week punt, Ken, at this point, or next month?
We're doing the public hearing, Madam Chair. I would respectfully request we move it beyond two weeks to the next.
Okay, we'll go ahead. Okay, we'll go ahead and do that for the first public hearings of, let me see.
March.
Of March. I think that is a little more than two weeks.
March 5th?
Yeah. Yeah, for March the 5th. That's my motion. I have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Please say, or please push your buttons. I'm in the other room again, all of a sudden. There we go.
Can we get voice-activated buttons?
That technology will cost you. Okay, we are postponed on that item. That is all that I have myself. Eric Johnson, do you have anything from the county?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I do not have anything to add. Thank you.
And Counselor?
Madam Chair, nothing to add, and just a brief note that I will be asking the Board for an executive session at the end of the agenda.
Thank you. And you do not anticipate any business taking place after that for those who are sticking around?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from staff? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Some move.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously, which takes us on to our next item, which is to, and we don't have any announcements, I don't think. Are there any reports, any announcements from anyone? Do you have a special announcement?
I do have.
Miss Cindy, I believe you do.
I never have an announcement, but I do, I just wanted to acknowledge Dennis and I went to an event, I don't know what day, yesterday. These days really run together. And it was just the most special event. We have a gentleman that was pinned by the General Counsel, Council General of France. He lives in an assisted living facility on James Burgess Road. His name is Corporal David Nelson. He's 95 years old, and he was made a Knight by the French government for what he did in World War II. And while that in itself is just incredible, and the honor that was given to him, and I went, not expecting to get the blessing that I did, but even more so, the blessing that maybe didn't get written about in the paper. And there's always just so much controversy over people standing and saluting a flag. And there was a gentleman that was in front of Dennis and I where we were standing, and I think he was a veteran, but I don't know that to be sure. I just think he was in my heart. And the struggle he went through in his wheelchair to be able to stand and put his hand and to take his cap off and to keep his balance. And I was so touched, I went home and wrote about it on Facebook, but I thought, that's what America's all about. And that's meant so much to me, and I wish I could videotape that and showed it to the world. And not only did he pledge, and not only did he put forth that kind of effort, he started, it was just music playing of the National Anthem, and he started singing as loud as he could sing. And it wasn't because he thought he had a great voice, it's because he thought he had served a great country. And I just was so touched by it, I couldn't get it off my mind, and I wanted to announce that. I just thought it was a wonderful thing to see and witness.
I'm so sorry to miss that. All right, well, who wants to follow that? We are, it is now time for public comments, and Karen Shields is going to remind everybody of the rules of public comments.
Thank you, Chairman Swanson. Madam Chair and members of the Board, we'd like to take a moment to review our meeting procedures. We ask that you please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. Those who would like to speak during public comments should complete a public comment form, which is available just outside this room. Those who wish to speak should not currently be an announced candidate for public office. Information regarding specific requirements to address the Board is listed at the podium. Please state this information prior to speaking. All comments should be directed to the entire Board and not to a particular commissioner. There are two public comment opportunities during the meeting for speakers to make a verbal presentation to the Board, one now and one prior to old business. The number of speakers is limited to 10 now and 10 at the second portion. Madam Chair, we have no forms that have been submitted. If anyone would like to address the Board at this time, please come forward.
All right, I think we'll, I guess we'll move on then. Oh, we do. Come on forward. And you can turn your form in afterwards after you speak, if you'd like.
Had to type this up, so I don't forget it. Good evening. My name's Scott Littlewood. I live at the lakes of Franklin Gold Mine. This has been a two-year endeavor for our now 90-plus home community, and it wasn't until Commissioner Cooper took office until we actually felt some hope. With Commissioner Cooper, Planning and Director Tom Brown, Resident Sean Harris, Resident Bruce Beaumont in attendance this evening, and myself, we've communicated many times about this situation. What makes us unique is that we actually have the current developer, the residents, and the Forsyth County officials all able to come together to work out what we feel is a solution. From my understanding, not doing this on a daily basis or ever, is that's kind of a little bit unusual in this world, everybody coming together and making it happen. And this is for ZA 3969. And I, with the fellow residents, others might speak, I don't know their intentions, are here to ask for your vote for the separation and the rezoning of this additional phase of 100% rental homes to be separated from the lakes of Franklin Gold Mine and save our home values. I would also like to thank Mr. Brent Landry and Mr. Chad Swain of American Homes for Rent for their openness to hear our side and work with us towards the separation. Last but not least, big thanks to Commissioner Molly Cooper.
Thank you. And there is a public hearing coming up for this, so there will be another opportunity to speak to that issue.
Hey, Board, good evening. My name is Ken Mares. I live at 5385 Winding Lakes Drive. Part of, my home is part of the Phase 1 of the development. I sent an email to all the Board, all the Commissioners, as to the reasons I felt were important to separate the two, Phase 3 from Phase 1 and 2, and listed numerous reasons in there why. And I don't know if I need to recap that, or people have that as record right now. But I think it's very important that we do separate them for home value reasons, for being able to govern ourselves, the homeowners, because if they are not separated, we're never going to, we're going to be under the rule of the majority homeowner or property owner, which would be for American Homes for Rent. And then other reasons why also. Also, as part of the separation, I hope, and I haven't seen the new plans or what's being submitted for approval, but I certainly hope that there is a physical divide, not only a legal divide between the two, Phase 3 and Phase 1 and 2, but also a physical divide. Currently, there is also a road already built between the two subdivisions, and I hope the Commission or the Planning Board requires that that be eliminated. But I encourage the Commissioners to vote for the separation of the two, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Whitehead. I live at 5955 Winding Lakes Drive. I abut the third phase, and I'm with them. I hope the Commissioners, I appreciate everything. You guys have worked toward this separation, and I hope there's a physical separation as well, since I abut it. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the Board during this public comment period? Please come forward. Madam Chair, I see none.
Thank you. So we have some previous minutes to adopt. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting and public hearings of January the 23rd?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the work session and executive session of January the 28th?
Some move.
We have a motion, a second? Please vote. That also carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Some move.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt consent. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Hold on a second. Ken, was that something we were going to try to pull off, that consent on post-ride? It's my bad, I forgot, Madam Chair.
Well, Commissioner Levente, I mean.
Commissioner Levente, should you want to take that off with the context of adding to it, now would be the time to do it. And that would take, that would take a motion and a second to move it to new business.
Is there a motion to reconsider?
Reconsider, yes, ma'am. Might I make a motion, reconsider the consent agenda?
There's a motion and a second to reconsider. Please vote. The item is now up for reconsideration.
Ken, you got the number?
Was there an item you wanted to remove from consent?
I'm sorry?
I think it's GG.
We've got to be sure.
Yes, it is. It is consent agenda item. Let me get the number. I think there's a number attached to it. Is there?
And we can move it to?
Yeah, it's three double G.
And we can move it to new business tonight or old business tonight?
I think we've adopted this agenda already. Should we move it to work session to hear it next?
You may want to knock this out tonight, though.
Well, I mean, even if we've adopted agenda.
We've adopted the agenda.
Yeah, but even if we've adopted the agenda, we've not adopted the consent agenda, correct?
Yes.
We haven't adopted.
No, but the agenda that we're going to handle business for tonight's been adopted. So can we add to it, once it's been adopted, as our work, as our business tonight?
We can, because this was already on the agenda. It was just been, and it's a fair question, Madam Chair, so forgive me.
We're just moving to another location.
What number, GG?
That's the 45 days resolution.
Three GG.
Yes, that is.
Thank you, sir. And old business is okay, or new business, sir?
We've discussed this in work session, so typically if it's going to go to an agenda, it'd be new. It'd be new, because it's new for the regular session.
All right, and I don't think we have a new.
Okay, so the motion is then to move item 3GG?
3GG to new business number two, please.
Old business number one, correct?
Do you care?
Are we saying it's old business, since it was in, we already?
New business.
To new business? Okay.
I recommend you to go to new business.
My motion is to move to new business number two, please.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. All righty, then that item now is moved.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Is there a second? We have a motion, a second? Please vote.
Thank you for that, Board.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving along, we are into our public hearing phase. Our first public hearing is for ZA 3965. Mr. Brown, can you please describe the item for us?
This item is located in Commission District Number 1. It's a public hearing for a county-initiated request to rezone 59.64 acres from Res 3 to Res 2. Property is located on Doc Bramlett Road.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move.
We have a motion, a second? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're now open with a vote of five to zero. Is there anyone who is here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
The motion is second? Please vote. Commissioner Cooper, this is your district. I believe we discussed you maybe wanting to kick the can on this and have some discussion with the committee?
I have been contacted by the folks that live close to this parcel, but up against this parcel, as well as the owners of it. And I think it's in the best interest that we have more conversation, discussion, therefore I'm asking that we give this another 60 days before I make a ruling on it.
And, ma'am, would you like it to be another public hearing, because they may want to come, or?
Or do you want it as old business?
I think we'll do it as old business, because we've had, it's just a small amount of, number of people.
Got you. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so 60 days roughly from today is going to bring us back on, what does that bring us to?
April 2nd.
April 2nd.
April the 2nd. So the motion is to postpone this item back, bring it back as old business?
April 2nd.
On April the 2nd.
Second.
We have a motion, a second? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All righty, public hearing number two.
Zoning application 3969, located in Commission District Number 1. The Forsyth County Board of Commissioners is the applicant. This is a public hearing for county-initiated request to rezone 50.98 acres from Res 3 to MPD. The applicant's also requesting two variances. The first is to reduce the required commercial percentage of the development from 10% to zero, and the second is to reduce the minimum required open space of the development from 36 to 22%. The property is located on Hurtsville Road.
Thank you. Is there going to be a presentation portion of this?
We have Chad Swain from the American Homes for Rent is here. His presentation has been loaded on the network, and I think he's prepared to go through that.
I just didn't know if we wanted to use that as part of the presentation, or if we wanted to do that during the?
I think that would be better for public hearing.
During the public hearing?
And then I'll be available for any questions on technical side as well.
Okay, that'll work. If there's anyone who is here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward at this time. Is there anyone who is here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
The motion is second? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Someone wants to bring that plan forward? Do you want to have that displayed, Molly, or?
Yes, I would. Do you want to start out with it, Chad? There you are. This is Chad with American Homes for Rent that will, American Homes for Rent is going to own this Phase 3 development, and it will be separating from lakes of Franklin Gold Mine. So just kind of giving an intro to what this is about.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Commissioner. And we are actually, hold on just one second. We are just finishing rolling through these conditions.
Okay.
There were a couple changes here in the last few days.
The red lines.
And.
I think number 26 is what you guys are looking for.
Chad and I have talked about. I want him the opportunity to see all these. We emailed them out earlier today, and I want him a chance to look at them. Can we see 13 one more time? We'll go back at the end. And Susan, would you go back to 13 in particular? That's one he had a question about. Thank you. Susan, the file master development plan, it's a PDF. Chad, do you want to walk through that slide by slide, or is there a particular?
Yes, so this slide shows Phase 3 as a redesign separating us from the Phase 1 and Phase 2 property of Franklin Gold Mines. In this Phase 3, as you can see, the cul-de-sac that's on the, I guess it would be the east side, now separates us from the street that was previously a connection road. And there will be a tree buffer planted at the back of those lots. And then we also have, if you look in the front of the subdivision where it ties into Hurtsville Road, we have an amenity area that we will build our own amenity to not have the use of the amenity with Phase 1 and 2. This is a representation of the monument that we will build. We'll have to come up with a separate name for this property, so that it won't be confused with Franklin Gold Mines. This is an example of the clubhouse that we will build as part of the amenity. So a very nice clubhouse we'll build. These are some of the standards that was part of the previous zoning, and that we had asked that during the rezoning that we adhere to the existing zoning in Phase 1 and 2. And I believe that's what we have done. These are some elevation examples of the homes we will intend to build. I believe that's, is that, oh. So if you have any questions, or anything for me?
One of the things that you'd be so kind to address, Chad, and one of the residents had some comments about what we're going to do with the buffers, that it not just be a separation, but there'll be some landscaping on those buffers that separates?
Correct.
Lakes of Franklin Gold Mine from Phase 3, which is going to be renewed development.
Yes, so there is a planted buffer plan. I thought you had had that. It was part of the existing buffer planting that is required for where we abut the adjacent properties. And then we will also, the two lots that now will be where the existing tie-in road was, we will plant the backside of those lots with heavy vegetated trees and understory and overstory trees to have a visual buffer as well.
Okay, great. I just wanted to assure, I didn't get your name, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Carrie Whitehead.
I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that, and that you understand that they are going to be doing that and planting the trees and the landscaping buffer.
So that will be not just where the current tie-in is, but for all the lots that abut Phase 3?
There should be two lots that will? Adjoin, the two lots.
I just wanted to make sure that you understood. I can't really have a conversation, I'm sorry. That's okay, I got to make it clear. I just wanted to make sure that you saw this and that you understood that that was going to be, that is part of it.
Susan, could you put on the PDF labeled concept plan? I think that one's a little better than the one that was embedded in the PowerPoint. And the PowerPoint one was a little smaller and also turned sideways. I think the concept plan will be a better. Right, and zoom that out just a little, or scroll it, so we get the north end. There, maybe describing the setbacks based on that would be helpful.
So there will be, there will be planting on those two lots that are close to the street itself, and then, I wish we had the planting, but there are planted buffers on both the east and west side, where we joined the other property owners. But those, I think there's a 25-foot undisturbed at that point right there, where they're the perfect move. I do believe there's still existing buffer that's already there.
Okay.
On this, I'm going to let you take the lead on the changes in condition, number 13, and I think it was number 34 that was added as well.
Speak on condition 13?
Yeah, if you would just go with that.
All right, yeah, let's put that back on the screen.
Make it very clear, yes.
Condition 13 is on the home size, and the goal there, the direction we had, was to make sure the conditions, any conditions on both this existing property or on the zoning for Phase 1 and Phase 2, because there are different zonings, that we copy any of those conditions that apply to this property.
Right, and these are, I'm sorry.
This is a standard in one of the existing zonings, that the home sizes shall be at least 2,000 square feet. That also happens to be the current standard in the UDC, and we've added it here as a condition, just to make it clear, the standard for the minimum home size in Phase 1 and 2 is the same standard that is applying in this new, what today is Phase 3, what potentially will be a whole different subdivision if this is approved.
And it is compatible with today's UDC as well as UDC that was in effect at the time of the older zoning, when Phase 3 was originally zoned.
That's right. We've recently increased that, I'd say in the last two years.
Okay.
We bumped it up to 2,000 square feet in the Unified Development Code, our zoning ordinance, and this is the same number.
Okay, so this, this is a gift.
It's a bit of a belt-and-suspeners approach, but if the Unified Development Code was ever changed in the future, and that was lowered, this condition would still apply and hold them to 2,000 square feet.
Right, okay, great. So this is a bit of a gift for American Homes for Rent that was being very cooperative in working with us to try to get this to work out as your new development, blending the old conditions that you had originally had and with the new UDC codes.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, if you would go over, let's see, well, I can do that, number 34, I think it is, about the church, well, no, it doesn't have it on mine, the church with the decel lane on those conditions, that there will be a 25-foot buffer between your decel lane and the property line, where the church parking lot is that butts up against the property of your new development.
Correct, there is a planted buffer, 25-foot planted buffer that we will have to plant. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to make that sure. I don't know if Scott Brogan is out there.
Susan, can we go back just a few conditions? There we go, I think it's?
There he is.
30. Condition 30.
You got it, okay.
And that is the graphic that, it got flashed on the screen really quick while Chad was talking, but can you put on, back on the one that I think is, that the PDF's labeled Or parking buffer, excuse me. So here's back to the more southern portion of the site. This is a blow-up that's been highlighted of the plan that they've submitted, and there is a 25-foot buffer along the proposed right-of-way of Hurtsville Road, and that buffer does continue north, up their eastern property boundary. The church parking lot is just off to the right side of the map there. Can you scroll up so I can see the top of the PDF? There we go. So the church parking lot, one of the church parking lots is essentially behind Lot 149, and you can see that there is a buffer that runs up that property line. And that's memorialized in the condition.
Okay.
I'll start after our parking lot, that's right.
Excellent, thank you. All righty, did any of the Commissioners have any questions or anything you'd like to say?
I know you've worked really hard on this, and we've all been contacted by the community. They were very concerned, and rightfully so, and I'm glad you were able to pull everybody together. It is a pretty unusual thing to see it, to go that well, and so kudos to you.
I would like to say that I've enjoyed working with Brent Langley with American Homes for Rent, as well as with you, Chad. Tom, you've done great work with this, so has Ken, because we had to put our heads together on this. Carol Williams, Sharon Farrell, there's been a lot of us that have put our heads together on it, Scott Littleton, Sean Harris, and we're very pleased that we've been able to work this out, and that this new development will be developed and built. And so I would like to make a motion now. I'm ready. I'm ready. Okay, I would, I move that we approve the county-initiated rezoning of, for 50.9 acres from Res 3 to an MPD, with the variances and conditions as presented to the UDC, Table 20B.1, parcels 009 through 009. Table 20B.1, Parcels 009 through, zero, excuse me, dash 046, 009190, 008 dash 008. And it is code ZA 3969.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Well, just before the vote, thank you. That was a perfect motion and everything's in order. I just wanted to ask Mr. Brown a question real quick. So this version of the conditions, I thought there had been some dialogue about some amendments to the conditions on some of the language. I didn't hear any of that. So this is the version that you understand to be the latest and greatest as far as going forward?
Yes, and that was, I think it was 13, that Chad asked to see on the screen. That originally had some language about.
Thank you.
An average home size.
Yep.
And now has clarified that to talk about minimum home size only. And that is the newest. Thanks for checking. That was an important point. We had to get that one right.
And the, if we go down to one other, is there a condition involving the master plan? Thought there was, as far as the aesthetic? Substantially in conformance with the master plan? And that was the master plan you had displayed and that were those elevations that were displayed?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you brought that. Let me just add, I made my motion on no, but let me just add one thing.
You want to withdraw second, Cindy?
Yeah, withdraw.
So she can amend it.
I withdraw.
And that is the reason we're doing this is because the American Homes for Rent, this part of, that was originally part of Lakes of Franklin Gold Mine, is going to be 95 rental homes. And Phase One and Phase Two are privately owned homes. So that is why the separation. And it's somewhat of a new product to have a development that is all rental homes, single-family rental homes in Forsyth County. So that is one of the reasons, this main reason. It took so much work because it's new. And everyone did work together to make this happen, so I wanted to explain why.
Did the court capture, did you include the site, the concept plan with your motion? Since we've got to open back up, would you like to do that?
Sure, yeah.
I think we have that called out in one of the conditions if we keep scrolling down. And it calls out a specific.
Wonderful.
And that's the only site plan we have in the file.
Give you your second back.
I'll give my second back.
There you go.
But I do have a question. Do you, why do you think you see the market, the demand for rentals like this? I mean, people just don't want to own homes or?
Honestly, I'm really just the land development. I'm not with marketing, but it is a trend that we are seeing. Homeownership, people aren't staying in their homes very long. And this is an opportunity for them to be in a very nice home instead of an apartment. And we take care of the amenities, we take care of the homes, we mow the yards. And it's just a different, I guess, market, right?
I just wondered, I was curious if with the downturn of the market, if people started renting then and they decided they liked it. Maybe, I don't know.
All right. Are there any further questions from the board? We do have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody who was involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three. Mr. Brown.
Public hearing number three, Zone AZ 190035, located in Commission District Number Three. It's a public hearing for Lloyd Brothers Properties LLC regarding the amendment of condition number one, Article Three, Section 3.01, placed on Zone Application 1184.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? The motion is second, please vote. We're now open. Is there anyone who is here to speak in favor of this request?
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, let's let them.
Yeah, they can start making their way forward.
Yep. While you're making your presentation, do you have something to us to put on the screen, your site plan you're trying to do?
I do have a dumb drive with a PDF. Good evening, I'm Rhonda Ledbetter with Engineering 303. We're located at 108 Allen Street here in Coming. The owner, Mr. David Lloyd, is here with me as well, representing the zoning amendment and also the sketch plaid behind this. We're asking that the property located at 5720 North Commerce Court, it has zoning conditions attached, and one of those addition, conditions is a 25-foot side building setback. We're just asking for an amendment to meet current UDC of 15 feet. And there's a site plan one, a site plan PDF on here that shows on the north side of the property is where the building setback is that we're requesting an amendment for.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to do to speak in favor of this? Or do you, because we can do some Q and A afterwards, but this is.
Okay, we're here to answer questions.
Okay, in that case, I'll call and see if there's anybody else that wants to speak in favor. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward.
Good evening, I'm Laura Swillard. I actually own property in Highland Ridge, which, where this is located. Actually, he's directly across the street and it actually has no effect on me or in my opinion, any other properties in there having a tighter setback on this building. So I have no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? We have a motion in a second, please vote. Our public hearing is now closed. Miss Commissioner Levent, this is your district.
Would you all mind coming back up to podium everybody that spoke, please? And just let the board know, I have not had any discussion with any of these folks to date. And if you could put the site plan up one more time, please, and we'll go back to the other one in a moment. Have you had a conversation with the person to the property adjoining where you're looking to get the variance?
I have not, no. It's currently vacant property. I have not spoken to the owner.
Ken, just, or Tom, either one, does this have an effect on the property next door to what they can and can't do with theirs on minimum setbacks between buildings? Will this make them move their building further off their property line than the code would normally require because of a moving theirs closer?
Pardon Mr. Brown on that.
No, the UDC would not require that.
Okay, and the fire marshal also? Because sometimes when they get too close, the other guy's going to move. Okay. Just want to make sure you're not negatively affecting your property owner next to you, that's all. And I'm assuming you're doing this because of the 75-foot impervious setback?
Yes, due to the riparian buffers on the site were limited and would like to get the amendment to help out with the development.
So I have another question. Your engineer's probably not here and you may have asked them this. When I'm looking at the line of which they show the creek, they then show the impervious, undisturbed, the buffers have this much greater arch than what the creek is showing. Why did they show it that way?
Because right there, there's a springhead. And we have to show it that way when there's a springhead involved.
Okay, there you go. Because it does obviously look like, why is it so pronounced and why are they having to move the building? So this is why you're considering you have a hardship then?
Yes.
Okay. That's fair enough of me. Is everybody else okay with that?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. If you can go back to the... Thank you. I'm making a motion to approve the AZ 190035 amendments to the zoning conditions originally on ZA 1184 as shown with the site plan that was also shown and the variances.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Okay, thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Number four, Mr. Brown.
Public hearing number four, this is the same property. Application is sketch plaid, SP 190010, Lloyd Brother Property, Lloyd Brothers Properties LLC in Commission District Number Three. Public hearing for a sketch plaid approval to build warehouses, manufacturing, processing, and assembly facilities and buildings totaling 38,500 square feet on 4.574 acres of property currently zoned M1 and located on North Commerce Court.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. We're now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application?
Sketch plaid, please. Same line.
Rhonda Ledbetter with Engineering 303, here to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Thank you for having us. My name is David Lloyd with Lloyd Brothers Properties. Just wanted to make myself available if you guys do have questions and introduce myself.
Thank you.
And Mr. Brown, this is just for approval of sketch plaid?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Or anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please vote. Our public hearing is now closed. Commissioner Levent, this is yours again.
All right, so based on the conversation, the previous items is the same sketch plaid. And they believe their hardship is because of delineated waters, more so the spring that comes off of it, creating a much sharper and bolder line for the 75-foot impervious area. And based on that, I will make a motion that we approve the sketch plaid as presented.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, public hearing number five.
SP 190011, located in Commission District Number Three. Public hearing regarding sketch plaid approval for Rashana and Rupesh Patel to be guilt, to build a 40,560-square-foot office warehouse on 4.317 acres of property currently zoned M2. There are three variances included in the request. The first is to reduce the front landscape strip from 15 feet to 10. The second is reduce the zoning buffer along the eastern property boundary from 25 feet to 10. The third is reduce the zoning buffer along the northern property boundary from 75 feet to 45, the properties located on Shirley Industrial Way.
Thank you. Was there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. We're now open. If there's anyone who's here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward.
They're new to the process. If you want your engineer to come down also, it might be appropriate? Okay.
Do you want to go ahead and we'll have the public hearing and then he can do, give a presentation afterwards?
Please, and I thought the gentleman sitting next to him had showed up later and it became his engineer's word at natural.
Right, if you'd like to go ahead and state your name and go ahead and make any comments you might have, that would be appropriate.
Yes. Okay?
My name is Rupesh Patel.
Yeah.
And like, it's a 40,000 square feet building that we're trying to build on.
Okay.
Shirley Industrial Way.
Okay. And obviously you're in favor because you want to build it.
Yes, I am.
Okay. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor? Is this maybe your engineer entering the room right now?
No.
No, just checking.
Here we go.
But we can, he can, maybe that one.
Come forward, please, sir. Here he goes.
We're in our public hearing right now, so when you come forward, if you could state your name. And then go ahead and we're in the, in favor of portion of the hearing. Put you right on the spot.
My name is, sorry, David White, Civil Logistics.
Okay.
Do you want my address as well?
It doesn't, sure.
500 Sun Valley Drive, Suite H3, Roswell, Georgia 30076.
And you're here to speak in favor? Did you have something that you were going to present?
I'm here to support.
Just to support him?
My client.
Okay.
And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have for us.
All right, well, we'll do that after we close the public hearing. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? I'm seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioner Levent, this is your district, your applicant and his engineer are both here.
Yes, so this is a little interesting. This is, I had a conversation, Mr. Patel on the phone, quite a long one actually, because I wanted to know why the necessary violating for the variances. And if I speak out of turn, please, you're the engineer for this as well. If I'm wrong, please correct me. And I believe what Mr. Patel was telling me is that because there's not sewer there and they've had lots of conversation over the years trying to get sewer on that side of Highway Nine for redevelopment and development, that the costs are so astronomical, they have not done anything there for a while. And now what they would like to do is move forward their land to do something. But since there's no sewer, they have to put a septic tank in. And the septic tank and the septic lines are creating necessity for these variances. Is that correct? Did I do that correctly?
The, also the existing stormwater pond is in the buffer as well. And that will be, is being enlarged for the upstream properties and for this property to meet the newer standards that it wasn't, you know, designed for during the original construction.
Okay. At some point, if there's ever sewer on this, when do you plan to start in the building?
In about six, eight months.
Six to eight months? Which means you need to hook up the sewer in about a little over a year? Is that about right?
Yes, sir.
So our staff, just to let you know, is looking at two different options. Whether they bring it out of Fulton County or whether they create a pumping station that comes from across the street at Walmart. But the conversation is there that we've got to get sewer that side of the road to get proper development and redevelopment of certain items. But that's been in discussion for 15, 20 years in this county. Hopefully that becomes a reality before you have to put your septic in, just for the betterment of everybody and my belief. Anyways, so does everybody understand the reason for having to get there? It's just unfortunate we don't have sewer there yet. Anything else?
Not at this time.
Do you absolutely have to have the landscape strip buffer? Can we leave that one alone? It's only a difference of five feet. Does that encroach so much moving that back five feet to keep your landscape buffer?
It, it's, the five feet helps us get the parking spaces that are required. You know, without that, we can just get one row of parking and one row.
I may have.
You don't have to have it, but.
I may have another solution for you. May I ask staff a couple of questions if I may?
Sure.
Mr. Brown, the 75 feet is based on a commercial property being against agricultural, correct? The M1 or the M2? Because normally, commercial to commercial is only 40 feet, is it not? Or commercial to residential is 40 feet?
That's right.
Okay. So for y'all to know, this backs up to the Bennett property, which is that old 76 gas station. And there's another user just put under contract that may be coming for use. So it's not staying agricultural forever. So if y'all are okay with it, I'd like to just go ahead and move that one from 75 to 40 and allow them to keep their landscape buffer, give them the five feet that way. And they'll still be within the margins of commercial to residential with our UDC, which is going to become that before long.
Is your applicant.
Are you okay with that? Do you understand what I'm saying? You would literally just move everything back five feet, get your five feet. Because our code is what, 40 feet off residential right now and how much of it is commercial to commercial?
All right, I want to make sure I'm answering this right.
Yeah.
So we're talking about an M1 property?
Yes, abutting another residential or commercial.
Abuting resident, M1 property, a buffer along commercial is only 20 feet.
Okay.
Along residential, it is 60 feet.
60 feet, so they're asking for way more than that.
Say that again, please.
So if the gentleman behind you that just put that land under, and I haven't met with him yet to see what he wants to do. If it's commercial, it's only required to have, I believe, our staff just said, 20-foot. So what you're asking for, we're automatically coming to compliance because you're not asking to go down that far.
But I need to clarify that, Commissioner, I apologize. The property is M2. It's heavy industrial.
Okay.
So let me throw new numbers at you. Heavy industrial.
But this is how we put staff on the spot and mistakes are made when you don't do things ahead of time.
And they never called me, didn't, I understand, I get it. But when they don't hire zoning attorneys, they don't hire short people to sit down with us and everything.
So you postpone and you set up a meeting and you meet and you discuss it.
It may very well be. I'm not comfortable with the variances. Do y'all mind if we reset this for two weeks and try to work this out?
I am ready to tell you the.
Okay, go ahead.
I have them ready. They're all on the same screen. I just got to make sure I'm reading the right line. Heavy industrial, the buffer on residential is 75 feet.
75 feet.
That's just like in the agenda, I read off, the buffer was 75 feet, they want to take it to 45.
Okay.
If their adjacent property owner was commercial, it drops down to 25 feet.
25 feet, thank you, Mr. Brown. I would still like to postpone this two weeks if we're okay.
Is that your motion?
And we'll need to sit down. Yeah, my motion is postpone item number five. Yeah, my motion is postponed, item number five, public hearing number five, to February twentieth.
Would you like it to come back as old business?
That is absolutely fine, we'll have it worked out by then.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, please vote.
Thank you.
That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Two weeks. All right, thank you. Public hearing number six.
Madam Chair, just while we're coming down, just a very quick and very respectful point of order. Just, when the public hearing is open, I know y'all are eager to get right down to business, but might we just, with the public hearing, just the hearing as far as the people speaking unilaterally to the board, and then with respect to any question and answer, if we could just hold that until after the public hearing?
Right, right, and I, and he came in when we were in mid-hearing, so I wanted to kind of help him navigate where we were.
This is more for the record than anything else.
Thank you, yeah. I know normally, we don't have, and that's why previously, I've asked if there was a presentation or.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, public hearing number six.
AZ nineteen zero zero three six, in Commission District Number Five. Public hearing for Rajkaran Investments LLC regarding the amendment of existing master plan district zoning in accordance with the site plan and master plan book filed here within, placed on zoning application thirty-three sixteen.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? We have a motion, a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. And I, and you are here to speak in favor.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Sean Courtney with Lipscomb Johnson, on behalf of Rajkaran Investments LLC. This involves the Windermere MPD. And it is to allow a private event facility. You can see the property down there on Windermere. And this is the site plan. It's actually, it is located in the old Ace Hardware building that was there. And as the site plan shows, we've worked with Chairman Summerson to add extra parking for this private event facility. We are showing a hundred and ninety spaces, which is about, actually, it is one per sixty-eight square feet, and then it's about one point three, point three occupants. And this is the picture of the current building. To add the parking, we're keeping, we're showing enough open space, but we just had to slightly revise, these are the same pictures, revise the book just to show where the open space was located. And then we're revising one of the pages to allow private event facility as a permitted use, and putting in the parking calculation. And then we have three conditions to add, that, that the site plan be substantially similar to Exhibit A, and that hours of operation be from eight to two, with the serving of alcohol. And this, this is a private facility, so it's, it's really, you know, folks coming in for birthday parties, weddings, that sort of thing. But they, if, if they had it catered, they would need a, a special alcohol event permit. And then also, that the private event facility not have amplified sound or music outside, and that the, all activity take place within the building and on the two concrete patios that are shown on the site plan. And I can show the, this might be a better photo of the site plan. And just, just wanted to show you, so there's the existing building, where it says Track two B, and that's the existing, where the Ace Hardware is. And then on each side are patio areas, and that's where activity would be limited. I have my clients here with me, they'd be, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition to this application? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? We have a motion, a second, please vote. And we are now closed. Mr. Courtney, if you want to come forward, and anyone else who'd like to. We did work on this a bit, appreciate the, the work that went into adding some additional parking, because it's a different type of use than we typically see in our other commercial areas. One of the other things that we had talked about being a condition that I don't see reflected here was, was some language with respect to parking being contained within the site. So the, I think the other conditions capture the essence of what we were working on. And obviously, with number twenty-five, the alcohol language, they're still going to be held to, that, that reflects what is in our code for a different type of commercial establishment serving alcohol, so that's why that is there. But one of the other conditions, and it was really just to kind of make sure, parking was such a huge sensitivity, and I know that your engineer did a lot of work to try to make that happen, I, we came pretty close to doubling what was initially on the plan. But one of the conditions that I would like to add, and I want to make sure that you guys are good with that, is that all event parking must be contained in the marked spaces on the property. And that was just to make sure that we understood that there was not to be any spillover onto other parking lots. And obviously, if you make an arrangement with a neighboring business for evening activities, that, that's a private arrangement, and that's fine. I just want to make sure that we're not having problems with people parking on the grass, people parking in other businesses, people parking residential neighborhoods. And I, I think that would be probably only when you have all three slots completely at full capacity. It's probably not likely going to be the, the usual, but I do want to make sure that that's captured in here that.
Sure, that, that would be fine with us.
Okay. Do any of my colleagues have any questions?
I'd just like to make a comment, if I may.
Yes, please.
Having another event site is a welcome thing in our community, something that we're in our need of.
It's a nice location. Is, is two AM okay with you also?
You know, it is, and I bounce that around, and, you know, when I think, that's probably not going to be the usual either, it's going to be, it's, it's.
Except.
However long you have a wedding reception, that if you have an evening wedding or something along those lines, they asked for two AM, going by how we treat other, other types of entertainment establishments, I didn't see a necessary reason to change that. Well, there's no activity outs, outdoors.
Okay, good.
So that, that, you know, in that it does a but, a residential, on one side does a but residential, there was a sensitivity to noise carrying off the site, so that was why we do allow them to use their outside patio area for receptions, but there's to be no amplified sound or music out there on those decks.
Would you have any objection if the applicant explains why they need to go to two AM for like weddings and stuff? That's, I mean, I've never been the one who goes past ten.
Commissioner, they called different sites. I believe there's three in Gwinnett, and there's two in Forsyth, and I think five of the six, that was their hours till two AM. So they were just looking.
So they're following, okay. Do they indicate that's going to be part of their business model, the norm or not the norm?
I originally had one in mind, so when they asked for two, and it mirrored what we require of bars and restaurants.
I'm just worried about two AM, you get a lot of complaints.
I understand.
But it's going to be indoors, everything's going to be indoors.
One of the considerations I had, and I did discuss this briefly with Mr. Courtney, was the, the potential to possibly ask for that all alcohol service is cut off one hour prior to closing.
It's not a bad idea.
Because everybody, most of the people who are attending this are not going to be walking there, they're mostly going to be driving.
And that stops, they go home.
And, and if that is acceptable to your client, I, I think we'd go ahead and add that stipulation if that's, does not. So if you're open, if your event goes until two, you stop serving alcohol at one.
Madam Chair, that, that would be fine.
That would be fine? Okay, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Madam Chair.
If you could tell me, what is the square, what is the square feet of the building in?
Twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight.
Okay, whenever you're, whenever you're doing events, how many people do you anticipate you would be able to hold an event for?
Madam Chair, Madam Commissioner, we'll, we'll follow the standards that are followed by other event facilities.
I'm just kind of curious, because I'm excited about an event, things I'm sort of curious as to.
Our architect probably is in better position to answer that. I would let him speak.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Taylor Hadaway. The calculated occupant load for this space will be six hundred and twenty-nine.
Oh, that's higher than we talked about, before it was five hundred before.
That's a maximum. I don't think they necessarily anticipate having that many, but they certainly could. Building and space and parking would be designed.
Do you anticipate being able to section it off inside and have maybe two separate events going on simultaneously?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a visual of what it is that your product is bringing forward, so thank you for answering those questions.
And there, there is actually, the site plan shows the partitioned sections, I believe, the interior rendering, do you have that with you?
I do.
If you can go ahead and give that to them over there, they can go ahead and put that up, and that may answer some, may either answer some questions or stimulate some questions. They have it broken down into three sections with three service bays at the back.
That's great.
And just, there's no, there's no meal, food preparation on site, it is all cater, it's all anticipates a catered environment.
Okay.
And there we go.
Let's see.
Maybe draw back on that just a little bit, so you can kind of see the open, that center area. So it has that, kind of that rounded out area at the front corner.
This right here?
Mm-hmm, and so that's, that's part of, you can see all the different, the different halls, and then towards the rear, you can see where they have the catering prep areas for each separate area, and then the restrooms as well, so.
That's great, because we're having, personally, we're having events all the time, so I'm just glad to hear about this, okay? Thank you.
And, and so you'll notice to the, to the left and to the right is the outdoor terrace area, that's the patio that's referred to in, in the application, and that they are allowed to have activity out there, but no amplified sound.
Great, great.
So.
Wonderful.
Okay, are there any other questions from the board? All righty then, I think I am, actually, can we make sure that we capture the, the minor changes that we've made here to that condition number twenty-five that speaks to hours of operation and alcohol service? To add a line, and if you'd like to make a smoother edit on this, on what I wrote, Ken, please offer that, but I have alcohol service must be discontinued one hour prior to events end. All right.
That's, that's pretty good, that's the way we did it with movie theaters as well, so I'm comfortable with that.
And then, there would be a new condition also, number twenty-seven, which is that all event parking must be contained in marked spaces on the property.
I like that as well.
Okay, thank you. Tom, Mr. Brown, does that, how does that, does that capture similarly to what we've done with the cricket fields when we came into, as far as identifying that all the parking had to be contained within the site? Yeah, I think that's what we.
Not originally there, and I think that's.
Well, no, when we came and made the amendment.
The amendment, after the amendment, yes, that's where we ended up.
Okay, thank you, just want to make sure that we're clear on that. There's any further questions? Are you guys good with everything?
As far as that last condition, could we maybe add, you know, unless otherwise agreed to by that property owner? Because I think at, at one point, we talked about if they had an agreement with someone else.
Yeah, they do, and I, I think that the way that that works, and Ken, you can chime in on this, if they have a private agreement for off-site parking, we don't need to capture that on here, it's going to be complaint-based, I think, that if someone says they're parking on my property, they're going to get towed. Do we need to double down and say that if they have made prior private arrangements for off-site parking?
We didn't, we didn't do that at the cricket fields. Let me, let me read what we put at the cricket field.
Okay, that'd be great.
Well, we, no, we, it was diff, let me just read it real quick. What we said was, was parking for all events at this location shall be either contained completely on-site, or provided off-site at bona fide parking areas with shuttle or bus service to this location. Because now, again, zoning conditions are meant to address the issue in the geographical area where they're in. At that location, trust me when I tell you, there was not going to be any private agreements for them to park at private properties nearby. So that may not work here. It may be that we need to say, parking for all events at this location shall be either contained completely on-site, or on nearby or adjacent private properties that have agreed to provide such parking access.
That works for me, I'd like to, to say, when it's completely on-site, I'd like to include the words in marked spaces, so it doesn't just start parking onto the green areas, because there is a, there is a green buffer that is to the rear of the property between there and the residential area, and I don't, I don't want to see that get mauled with vehicles.
Okay. Okay, so with parking for all events at this location shall be either contained completely on-site at marked locations. Or provided off-site at adjacent or nearby private properties that have agreed to accommodate such parking.
Does that work for you? Does that work? Yeah, it would capture if you make a deal with the daycare, because they're not there in the nighttime, and, okay. All right, so with, with those conditions as stated, and with, I need to make sure I get it, capture it all correctly here, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment of zoning conditions for Z A three three one six for Rajkaran, Rajkaran? Rajkaran Investments, parcel number one seven seven dash five five eight, AZ one nine zero zero three six, for the, we didn't have any variances, it was just the changes to the, to the master plan, correct?
Yes, the master plan and the conditions.
The, yeah, the master plan and conditions as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Board.
Public hearing number seven was postponed until March the fifth, which brings us to our eighth public hearing this evening, and this is our first public hearing, I believe, so we will not be taking action, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, if you could.
Okay, this is a public hearing on the sign ordinance. We're going to have on the screen momentarily, section three point seven of the document, and that's the only section that's being proposed for a change. The change is to accommodate the new software that we are, that we will be rolling out in the next few months in the planning department. We'll have the ability to engage with our customers online. But to do that, particular for the sign ordinance, we need to make a minor change, and that's to eliminate the requirement for the customer to pick up a decal or sticker. It's an outdated concept in the first place, in that we have better ways to track, more foolproof ways to track what signs are permitted and what signs are not. The stickers for our higher-end commercial projects, the stickers are also, I would describe as unsightly. So the proposal is to eliminate the stickers, but to identify that we will continue to enforce the ordinance. This is the first hearing. The Board of Commissioners conducts both hearings on the sign ordinance, unlike the Unified Development Code, so this has not gone through the Planning Commission. First hearing is tonight, and short of any objections, I will schedule the second hearing for March fifth. Be here to answer any questions or take any input on the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Is there anyone who is here to speak in favor of the changes to our sign ordinance? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition to these changes? That just loves having a sticker. All right, there appear to be none, so is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, second.
The motion is second, please vote. Our public hearing is now closed. Any questions from the board, or do we just want to have this back on March fifth and?
I, I just have one, Madam Chair, from my, so the stickers, and if I'm wrong, Mr. Brown, I guess this is your department, they would be on the window, and it'd have a permit number, so if one of your enforcement or code enforcement wanted to go by, they'd get that number, they could put it into the computer, and they could look up that sign of what it's permitted for or not, correct? It'd make it a little easier on them?
Yes. Yes.
Will they be able to do the same thing by address, so that's not necessary?
Right, with the new, with the new software, and it's technology we've had for a while, but it will really be, be able to leverage it more in the field now, whereas before, it was an office-based interface. The inspectors, both zoning inspectors, building inspectors, and code enforcement inspectors will all have an iPad, links directly into the software, and they could pull up any permit. They could be on a property, they could see all the signed permits that were issued, and also pull up and open each of those files.
So, they build it by address, will this becomes obsolete?
This becomes obsolete.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, then we will plan on seeing this back, you'll schedule this for March fifth, and we'll have our, our next hearing on this. We are now at the part of our meeting where we have our second set of public comments. Once again, Karen Shields is going to read the rules for this portion of the meeting.
Madam Chairman, we have no forms that have been filled or submitted. If anyone would like to address the Board, please do so at this time.
Thank you.
I see none.
Where's Kirk? Kelly, you don't wanna talk? All right. Then we will go ahead and move on to our, we have no old business on the agenda, so we'll move on to our new business this evening, item number one. Mr. Johnson?
Commissioners, I think that Tim Perkins probably can handle that one.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I forwarded a request from the Chairman of the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District asking assistance from all counties in the district, you know, involves multiple counties and cities, a large area, and there's, there's a funding of staff through the ARC. Next year is a planned update year, and normally, the state budget includes funding for the district, and there was a fairly large request to help fund next year's study. Without it, all that money will be put back on the cities and counties to fund the study, and so there was a urgent request from the chairperson of the, of the district to reach out to our state delegation and ask for the funding for the district be included in the state's budget.
So, I, I mean, this is, this study is gonna benefit more than just our, this is, this is a regional and actually statewide concern, and so it would be appropriate for the state to fund this.
It's not statewide, but it's the metro area, which I believe was ninety-something total municipalities, cities and counties altogether.
Right.
So, it's the entire area. Every five years, we do plan updates, and we have a much higher, you know, expense from, just from the annual budget. I believe it's about a $700,000 request. In years past, there had been talk about cutting the funding out of state budgets, but we've always been able to keep, keep our funding in there. We do have funding on top of this, that the county adds to it, but they're asking for letters or contacts or anything else to be made to, to please ask for that funding to stay in the state budget or to be put, put in the state budget, 'cause it's currently out.
That was gonna be, my next question was with the current budget cuts, if it's, if it's even in there right now to be saved. It is not, they're asking to have it put back in. So, the action you'd like for us to consider this evening then would be to, be to direct staff to provide that letter, and do they wanna see it come under the signature of the Board of Commissioners, or how, how would they like to see that?
Yes, ma'am, I believe the thought was it would be best to come from the Commissioners and any other personal contact that you may have.
Okay, would you like to coordinate the drafting of that letter with our council, or, or are you, is that something that?
Be happy to, there may have been a draft language included in what we sent, but we certainly can modify it to be a little more personal.
We need to do it soon.
Yeah.
Agreed.
So, I guess I would like to, is there any questions or comments? So, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to go ahead and, and produce that letter. What do you think is a reasonable time to see that back?
We'll be able to have it, I suspect we'd have it back to you for a work session.
Okay, for our, and, and to have that available for our review at our next work session. That's my motion.
Second, can it be just Laura sign it?
Absolutely, if that's the pleasure of the Board, of course.
And direct the signature of the Chair, and authorize signature of the Chair. All right, thank you. Please vote. We have a motion and a second, and a vote of five to zero, and that carries unanimously. All right, and now, new business number two, which was, which came off of our consent agenda earlier this evening.
Ken, you wanna cover what we did in a way of a motion and why we might want to alter that slightly?
Well, the, the issue is an issue that has been something the Board has discussed previously and included at the last work session with respect to, candidly, the status of post-road. At the work session, at the last work session, I brought to the Board the issue of post-road, mainly because, and I know the Board is aware of this, acutely aware of it, that the Georgia Department of Transportation has issued to the county correspondence indicating that as of January 1st of 2020, it no longer considered post-road to be part of the state's system. The Board of Commissioners authorized a letter to go back to the Georgia Department of Transportation asking for clarification on this, and including asking that that decision be stayed for some period of time as we assessed it further to include assessing funding with respect to post-road, particularly given that our 2020 budget is already set with respect to road maintenance, et cetera. GDOT did respond to that letter, and it was a very cordial letter, but it seemed to me to be nonetheless firm that their decision stood, that as of January 1st, 2020, post-road was no longer in the state's system. And candidly, I have seen additional documentation since then, mainly internal documentation, but mainly within the confines of engineering forwarding information from the state, that makes very clear that the state of Georgia believes that post-road is no longer a state road, in the state roadway system. And I believe even something I saw as late as today suggests to me that they believe it is in fact a county road. The Board of Commissioners has taken no formal resolution to adopt or declare definitively that post-road is in fact part of the county roadway system, but at the last work session, the Board of Commissioners did authorize, as I thought was prudent, that we would take emergency steps or emergency measures as was needed on post-road to make any upgrades or repairs that were necessary for the safety of the motoring public. That was what in fact was on your consent agenda this evening, and I believe the district commissioner may have actually wanted to take another look at that and maybe add some clarifications or further enhancements to that. Commissioner Levitt?
So, during the, I guess, the years, we have gotten support from this Board to get permission from GDOT to look at a traffic light and how we might fund that. GDOT came back, it finally gave approval while it was under their system, saying that once we do the study, if it fits criterias of items they have in their storage, they will donate those items, and then we would, the county being we, would then pay to install these equipment. But when I talked to Ken about this and the Major's Road Improvement Project we already voted on to send down to GDOT, we already paid for a plan to be done, Ken felt those didn't fall under the motion for emergency repairs. So, I'd like to add those in addition as emergency repairs, the other items that we were asking GDOT to consider. But I also like to reiterate what Ken just said. Although the state says it's not in their state system and they consider a state road, our council has clearly said we have not taken a formal resolution to adopt the road. And it seems to be on the newspaper, it indicated that we had, and it was automatically a county road, but I don't know whether it is or not, based on each side saying something different. Irrelevant, we still need to take care of the citizens, and I'd like to alter that motion with a new motion that says that until this is resolved, that the county will take the position not only to make emergency repairs to the road that are not limited to potholes, any washouts, cracking separations, that it also will take care of the traffic light that was approved by GDOT at Pittman Road, the Major's Road Engineering Plan. We will have our staff look at the speed limits for potential reductions and reposting, and any roundabouts that they may also feel are appropriate on the road until this is resolved.
Second for discussion. So, are, in your motion, are you anticipating then that we would go ahead and install this traffic light? Because that was one thing that GDOT had, had stated that they would pay for, and they did not retract that when the road was turned over to us.
They said they'd pay for the equipment, if I remember correctly, we'd have to pay for the installation.
That's, and that has not changed, so are you, are, with your motion, does that anticipate then that we would?
Bring that forward, yes.
Okay, not that we, not that we would then take on the, the burden of buying the equipment, 'cause as I, as far as I understand, they have, they were ordering that equipment.
Yeah, they still may supply it, that's correct. I just want, but my, my, my motion for disemergency repairs, Ken felt that didn't cover that traffic light and the speed limit we were considering, and the Major's Road project this Board already voted on to fund engineering plans on and sent to GDOT, and they never gave an answer back whether they approved that improvement of that intersection yet. This is just to allow us to consider it for future meetings to vote on it.
I think we can always consider that, but, um, any
I'd like to hear from John. I mean, I know you've got a conference call with district on Tuesday.
It's really up to the Board if you wanna move forward with those intersection improvements at this time. We've, you know, designed both, submitted them to GDOT for encroachment permit. They have since said that there'll be no encroachment permits issued, because it's now a county road. So, they've taken the stance that it's ours and we can do what we want with it. You know, I'll, I'll rely on Ken's opinion as to whether or not we should move forward with those improvements. If the Board elects to, we will make some minor revisions to the plans, you know, prior to bidding out for construction, but, you know, we will pers
Do you have an estimate of what those, what those, how much funding is gonna be required for those, either in total, in, in their totality or individually?
And do we have money for it? Is it funded?
My motion was just to allow us to consider it, it was not for any one project to be approved tonight.
Okay, 'cause Ken, 'cause John's talking about moving things forward, so
Well, I don't know the, I don't know the, I don't have the COF's estimates off the top of my head, you know, tonight, but
This is just so we can consider and ask him to bring that.
But is it smart to, to talk about this if we're going down on the eighteenth, to talk to GDOT about it?
This is just to consider, so it's in, so, so that we can consider it. 'Cause right now, we've already voted to consider emergency repairs, but we didn't really clarify what that was.
I don't have a problem with considering, 'cause that's what we do anyway, and that's what we would do, but I'm just saying it just, it was, it was just an interesting motion, just because I wasn't understanding what you were hoping to achieve with that, since we always can consider things and we do have a meeting scheduled.
That's correct. But we're not voting to fund anything, we're not voting for anything.
But if the nugget in there is that you want to expand the scope of the public safety aspect, I certainly understand that.
That's correct, that's all I'm trying to do, ma'am.
Well, let, let me, let me offer up this clarification, and Commissioner Levitt, I may ask you to ask the second, be withdrawn and restate it, because here's why, because the motion with respect to emergency repairs was not just to consider emergency repairs, it was to implement emergency repairs. And so I think we need to make a clear line of distinction that we are, if that's where the Board's gonna go, it's, it's we're gonna authorize by engineering staff, my, you know, Department of Public Works, Department of Engineering, to implement emergency repairs as are needed in the discretion of the engineering department, and then to consider the Major's Road Improvement, the traffic light, the traffic circles, and the other sort of items that you just discussed.
But I have one issue with that, because we've already considered the traffic light a safety issue, and so does GDOT. That should fall under the emergency repairs.
Okay.
The Major's Road, I don't know if that does, not a last staff, it does jam up and there are some issues there, but I don't know if that's considered an emergency repair or not. The bottom line is, the question was, is there any funding by the Commissioner, and it's scooped up most of the funding. I mean, that's just
I'm gonna go ahead and withdraw my second, so if you wanna restate anything.
So, Ken, see if I get this right. I'd like to change the motion for the Board to approve until it's decided whether or not this is gonna be put back into the state's system or not, or the counties are gonna ultimately had to end up with it. That in the meantime, the county will take on responsibilities, any emergency repairs that our engineer staff considers emergency repairs by engineer, traffic engineer standards. But it'll also include the traffic light that's been approved by GDOT at Pittman and Post. To consider repairs necessary by our engineering staff and to bring forward those costs and how to implement those plans, Major's Road Intersection Improvement, the speed limit study, and possibly reposting of signs, and any roundabouts that our staff may agree would be an alternative to improve that road.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion carries.
Madam Chair, just for purposes of the, the record, and I, I think I understood every bit of that, but I just wanna state it again. So, it sounds to me like the, the, the clarification of what was on the consent agenda was the same clarification that our engineering staff are authorized to make emergency repairs, but for purposes of that definition, it's whatever they think is needed for the traveling public's safety to include the traffic light.
Yes, sir.
That's gonna be part of the definition.
Okay.
And then to consider
Yes, sir.
Those other matters that you identified.
Yes, sir, and, and putting it on them, because they are supposed to be the traffic engineering pros.
All right, and that's fine, so I wanna ask one more point of clarification before we leave, and I know we're about to, to recess. But the, on the consent agenda, it also said that we would not take up the issue of a resolution accepting post-road into the county system for forty-five days.
Correct, 'cause we have meetings downtown still coming, so I don't wanna do that until we hear what those meetings net or don't net.
Right, but we have totally changed what was on the consent agenda, so if that still wants to be the will of the Board, I would ask for a separate motion telling us when that's gonna go back on the work session.
Can we, can we do that after our meeting and decide that after the meeting?
Do it whenever you, you know
So, we'll, I would like to leave it alone until we have our meetings, we'll better know how that works out.
Okay, all right, so for purposes of this item, then, the matter will come back on the work session whenever the Board, under our eternal rules, puts it back on, thank you.
But Ken, that motion did not subject the county to paying for the red light outside what GDOT's already promised that they'd pay for, did it?
The, the motion did, was agnostic on funding.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, in that case, I understand there is a need for executive session, so is there a motion for us to go to a recess for the purpose of discussing land acquisition, personnel, and litigation?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously, we're in recess at 6:29 PM. There will not be any business following, we will simply be coming out to close the meeting. All righty, it is now 7:38. Is there a motion to reconvene the regular meeting?
Submoved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. We are now open, is there a motion to adjourn?
Submoved.
Second.
And a motion and a second, please vote, and we stand adjourned at 7:39.